Good evening. I'd like to welcome City Business Administrator Larry West, Mayor Cognetti, Don King, our city planner. I think Eileen Cipriani is going to be joining us in a little bit, and I think we're going to start off with an overview of the city's Scranton 2023 zoning ordinance. Mr. King, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting us here. I left you each a packet up there that has a copy of the slideshow that we're going to show you, and also some documents comparing the differences between the current ordinance and the existing ordinance. I think you probably already have them before, but just in case.
Mr. King, if possible, when you're speaking, can you pull that mic as close so that the audience can hear? Thank you.
This zoning ordinance is the first comprehensive update of our land use regulations since the 1990s. Ninety-three is when we adopted our last zoning ordinance. As you know, much has changed in Scranton over the past 30 years, especially regarding land use types and development patterns. And in order to make sure that we are best positioned to handle today's modern influx of new land uses, it's critical that we adopt a new ordinance. Tonight, we're going to try and provide you an overview and background of the development of the ordinance, as well as highlight some of the major changes. What is SAPA? SAPA is the Scranton Abingtons Planning Association's multi-municipal planning group that was formed in 2006. I won't go through the whole list of everybody that participates in it, but it's a long time coming. The first order business was to create the SAPA comprehensive plan. I think that was kind of finished in about 2010. The city of Scranton adopted it in 2014. After we got through that, we moved into what we call the implementation stage now. That's where we pass ordinances that actually regulate the uses. The comprehensive plan is a general plan for the whole city. The zoning ordinance is the specific regulations. Under state law, communities that don't have multi-municipal plans must provide and zone for every type of land use, even if it isn't compatible with the land use pattern in the community. This outdated law has been contributing to the abandonment of existing urban areas and the urbanization of rural communities and open space harming municipalities across the Commonwealth. With multi-municipal planning, existing urban centers can be designed as targeted growth areas with the goal of regaining population, commercial, and employment centers, while allowing neighboring communities to retain their conservation and land in rural areas. The goal of SAPA is to work together as a region rather than competing against one another to develop shared planning efforts. To achieve this, the 10 SAPA communities develop a joint comprehensive plan referred to as the SAPA Plan. Having a shared plan provides Scranton and our fellow communities with a variety of important benefits. The state or DCED favors community who plan and work together and provide priority consideration for state funding opportunities. Multi-municipal plans allow communities to designate targeted growth areas, which receive priority for new and upgraded infrastructure, new development and redevelopment, and other planning tools, making these areas more competitive and funding opportunities. In Scranton, most of central Scranton, as well as several mixed-use employment corridors, are targeted growth areas. As mentioned before, one of the benefits is we're not required to zone for every type of use in the city. Because we could share the uses amongst the 10, or now nine municipalities, there's some things that we don't have to plan for. Most importantly, the multi-municipal plan allows us to work together as a region to develop a joint vision for our future. Now, more than other, people travel between different towns for work, housing, entertainment, and education. And the borders mean very little to most people. Rather than fighting for the same pool of limited resources, we're able to work cohesively as a single region to allow everyone to thrive and grow. So, like I said, we're into the implementation phase right now.
Mr. King, have all of these other communities, have they approved or passed the zoning ordinance? I know Dunmore hasn't yet.
Dunmore hasn't. I believe all the other municipalities have, except for us and Dunmore. And none of them take effect. The way this multi-municipal planning works...
I'm seeing Attorney Rinaldi shaking his head. Clark Green has not?
No, no, no. I thought Wade Early withdrew.
Oh, okay.
That's what I thought.
Thank you.
Now, are we talking about adopting SAPA or adopting their newer?
Well... Yeah, we started at 10, and we're down to nine now.
Thank you.
Yeah. I said, so we're into the implementation phase, which is the zoning ordinance. We adopted the comprehensive plan. I said, the city of Scranton adopted it in 2014. So, we're six years out putting this together. In 2019, through the county planning commission, the SAPA group engaged environmental planning and design out of Pittsburgh to develop these complementing zoning ordinances for the nine remaining municipalities. The preliminary draft for Scranton was completed in early 2020, right around the time that the pandemic started. So, that kind of put a damper on things for a while. But after two years of public meetings, community meetings, a first draft was presented to council in 2022, January, I believe. That was tabled, and we started having more community meetings and meetings with the neighborhood associations. So, that brings us up to where we are today. Overview of the ordinance. It's laid out into 11 different articles, not a whole lot different than the existing ordinance, but the general provisions, definitions, district regulations. Overlay regulations would be things such as flood zones and historic districts. Supplementary regulations that spells out the requirements for all uses and provides regulations for stormwater management, grading, slope control. We have the specific criteria for certain uses. Certain uses are either special exceptions or conditional uses. Special exceptions uses are allowed uses, but they still have to be reviewed by the zoning board. Conditional uses are allowed uses, but they have to be reviewed by the governing body yourselves, who would sit in place of the zoning board. Usually, they're reserved for really things, types of uses that impact the whole community, like a landfill or an airport or something. Parking and loading regulations, sign regulations, nonconformities, which is something we deal with every day, that there are uses that are, the term grandfathered in. So, these regulations explain how that works. The zoning hearing board lays out what their duties and responsibilities are and the enforcement and administration of the ordinance. Changes since the last ordinance, new terms, short-term rentals that we didn't have back in those days, community gardens, agro-tourism. We have a new airport overlay zone, which we didn't have in the last one. Flood planes, we do, we had in the old ordinance. One of the nicer things about this ordinance is this addition of the Quick View and transect, which is, when you look through the ordinance, for each zone, there's a single page that has all the, what uses are allowed in the zone, what the setbacks are, and everything that has to do with that particular zone. So, rather than the old ordinance, you'd flip to one section to check one thing, another section to check another thing.
So, Mr. King, everything that was in that old ordinance, you're talking about when you flipped this one, you flipped that one, it was, all the designated areas were listed in columns going, you know what I mean?
Right.
Going down, it had what was special use, what was... Now, all of that is, all of that information that was in that old ordinance is in these sections here?
Is in these sections here, but it's done by zone. Where before, like you said, there was a table. So, you had to check the table. So, if you're in the R2, you go to R2, then you have to come over to this use in here. Now, you go to the R2 page, and everything that's allowed in that is in one bracket on one page. And then, there's a section that says what the setbacks are. There's a little diagram to show what we anticipate the setbacks will look like, or what developments will look like under that zoning.
Okay, but nothing is missing. Everything from that old one is in the new one?
So, we added some regulations for mixed-use zoning and housing. Includes more housing opportunities to increase the housing supply and try and lower some housing costs. Sustainable accessory uses like solar panels, gardens, electric vehicle charging stations, which weren't a thing. Since the initial draft was presented to council in 2022, some of the changes we made, removed oil and gas extraction, which for some reason was allowed in every use. We removed wineries and tasting facilities from most of the residential districts. We added more requirements for short-term rentals, or commonly referred to as Airbnbs. We added electric vehicle charging stations as an allowed use in all zones. We added the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, which allows for cottage homes to help increase the housing stock and for people that have family members that want to live with them. Addition of community gardens as an accessory use in all zones. Without going through everything, these are changes, most of these changes were made with the help of the neighborhood associations. Meetings, we had various meetings over most of last summer. Just, most of the changes were made to really reflect the ordinance closer to what actually existed on the ground. That's it. Trying to answer any of your questions.
I have a question. So, I'm looking under definitions, and we'll look at...
I'm looking under definitions, and simplified dwellings, such as combining apartment uses, combining duplex uses, et cetera. What is, can you explain that a little better to me?
Yeah, what page down there?
It's the first page of definitions. It's on the bottom, like third from the bottom.
I don't think I'm on the same page as you.
It's page one, under the memorandum.
Memorandum.
Oh, oh, okay. And which one were you asking about?
The simplified dwellings.
In the existing ordinance, we had a lot of different names. We tried to combine them into more, yeah, more modern terminology. I don't think, we didn't really change anything. I think it's more, we changed the names of certain things than...
But it says uses under both, so...
Yeah, well, that's what the zoning ordinance deals with, is they're all uses. So, single-family is a use, a two-family is a use, a multifamily is a use.
So, nothing was added or removed, it's just simplified?
Yes.
The terminology?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. In the old ordinance, we had some definitions. One was a townhouse, one was attached dwellings, which were kind of the same, kind of the same thing, and it got confusing. You know, one person's reading the ordinance saying, well, I'm looking at this as a townhouse, and another one's looking at it as attached dwelling units. So, we just tried to simplify and modernize what the terms we're calling things.
Okay.
We didn't remove any use, or I don't think we really added any use. We just, this is just a naming convention.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. King? I should announce now that the public hearing is actually moving from April 11th until April 18th. There was some conflicts, so that is going to be moved. And I'll announce that at the actual, when the city council meeting begins on fifth order tonight, but there's a lot of people here strictly for this piece, so...
And, Mr. King, if I could, just to pop back to the process here, and council, you see in your memos, especially the memo, that it starts with Article II definitions and goes through the changes since we first introduced this in 2022. Some of these pieces have been things that, you know, typos and things that we or maybe the county identified, but the bulk of the changes here are a result of both the administration and council meeting with various neighborhood associations over the course of more than a year. Many of you, most of you, I think all of you have been at many of those meetings. So, you know, I think this has been a robust process, a process that we've given the time, energy, and thought to, from not just the administration, definitely city council being very engaged in that process. So, I want to thank you guys for that, and I appreciate all of our community members who have done the same, coming to these types of meetings, asking for these meetings. I think the changes that you see are indicative of a true public process in this case.
So, I did have a question or two. The overwhelming input that we've received from residents has been from the Hill section, specifically regarding the Geisinger expansion. So, I'm wondering if you could speak to that and how things have changed over time since the proposed ordinance that we first saw in 2022, when the zones were initially changed to being civic on both the 200 and the 400 blocks of Colfax, how those other changes have come about? And then, second, my second question on that, I think there are concerns about accountability, and if someone wanted to, you know, create a project or build within a zone and needed to go before the zoning board for variance, then they would need to present their plans and provide more information on it in order for a judgment to be made. In this case, if the zones stay as-is and Geisinger moves forward with their plans, then, you know, what ways are we looking to still hold them accountable? Is there, have there been conversations about them continuing communication with the city about their planning? Because all we have now are just preliminary plans. I know there's a lot more that they have to do on their end before they were to start moving forward with actual construction, and I just want to ensure that with such a large project, that we're able to have a part in overseeing that as a city and communicating with them.
Well, I think since the initial draft, the changes have, I believe, the 400 block of Colfax, both sides were going to be town-city institutional, and I think the 200 block, both sides of that, were going to be town-city institutional. The latest draft, we, the, I'll say, the south side of the 400 block has been changed back to residential. The north side, or the park side of the 400 block is town-city institutional. We made some changes to the height, the height limits that are allowed to be built in that Block of 200 of Colfax has been changed to civic, and that allows the higher building and more building density.
Now, when you're saying town-city institutional, there's two separate definitions. One is R10 zone, and the other one is institutional, correct?
Uh, yeah.
The R10 is the town...
Well, R10 is a residential, is a residential district. Town-city institutional is a mix of, it's a step down from the civic zone. It's a mix of residential and institutional. It's, I guess, the transition zone.
You're calling it the full term. I saw it. I thought you were conflating the R10 with the institutional.
Yeah.
And from your perspective, why should the 200 block of Colfax not be town-city institutional and instead be civic?
Well, that, you know, that was a result of some negotiations between the hospital and the neighborhood association. I think it recognizes the hospital's need to expand and try to be the least intrusive into the neighborhood.
Over the course of the last, well, more than a year at this point, the Geisinger, the institution that is looking to expand their existing footprint, and the Hill Neighborhood Association, and last year, representatives from city council, mostly then council president Kyle Donahue, worked through this. There was a meeting here with Geisinger and the, Tim Swartz from the Neighborhood Association in December, where we talked through some of these changes and tried to get to, tried to get to a point where the civic and the institutional mix would still work for the build-out, for Geisinger to be able to expand their facilities, to expand their emergency room capabilities, to expand the types of services that they're offering right here in Scranton. And that gave, that gave at least that particular representative of the Hill Association a feeling of that we had come to a compromise. So, I understand that not, and every compromise are always going to be folks that are, feel that they're on the short end of the stick, and that is unfortunate. I do think, though, that if we, if we limit the zoning here too much, and the healthcare institution is unable to meet their goals of expansion, that we could be sitting here in a set of years, not very many of them, where we don't have that institution in our city anymore. So, I think we have to try to balance, to balance the input of the neighbors, and that's very, very important, but we also have to think about the whole city. Our job on this, you know, dais here is to think of the whole city. It's very important to make sure that we still have great healthcare in the city. Currently, our emergency rooms are overcrowded as-is. We need more of that. The goal of this expansion project is to have more of those services. If they're not able to expand, I do worry that they would expand somewhere else that's not here in the city of Scranton. And on the point about having a kind of a cooperation or communication agreement, at the meeting in December, the Hill Association representative and the representative from Geisinger had already been in talks about doing an agreement as such that they would have communication. I did touch base today with Geisinger specifically on that, and they said that they have, I believe they put out a draft of that, and that is, I'm not sure where the conversation goes, but on the Geisinger side, they're willing to have that type of agreement, put something in writing to have those conversations. And on the technical side, anything, any building plans still have to go through our planning office.
So, building plans, I mean, if we were not to restrict the height in this area, any building plans are coming through your office, but they're allowed at that point. I mean, as long as they're meeting their requirements, they're allowed. So, there's...
The zoning ordinance should set the regulations for the district. So, you know, whatever that ends up to be, that's what it should be.
Correct. Now, if the height limits were set at 45 feet, similar to the other block, does Geisinger still have the opportunity to come in front of the zoning board to apply for a variance for those building plans?
Anyone could ask for a variance if there's a regulation that they don't think they could meet. Now, technically, a good zoning ordinance, you shouldn't be giving out too many variants. A variance, you have to prove that there's a hardship that relates to your property. Very difficult thing to prove. I mean, it usually has to do with something physical. You have a stream that runs through the back of your property, and it's impossible for you to meet a 25-foot setback because of that stream. That's something that affects your property, and it doesn't affect the other properties generally. So, that, something like that would be a hardship.
I mean, some of the things that we've heard recently with the reasonings for the expansion, reasons for why we would need a structure of this height, that may fall into that category, though, correct?
It's possible, yes. And over the years, I'm sure you've seen, we've had a lot of projects that ended up in front of the zoning board because, well, part of it was because our ordinance is so old, and we just haven't caught up, and some of these institutions, the hospitals, the universities, have been expanding, and our ordinance didn't really account for that.
Okay. But if we were to keep the height restrictions lower, it wouldn't preclude them from coming in front of the zoning board for a variance?
No, it does not prevent them, no.
And when you receive the plans from them, you can then make additional recommendations from the city side, or, you know, we could still have input?
Certainly.
It's not, you know, going to be legally required from them to abide by what we provide as that input, though, correct?
When looking at the map updates since the last draft, I do see the riverfront area there. It says updated area around Memorial Stadium to HC&amp;N to match existing characteristics of the neighborhood. We've also changed that, is it Mount Pleasant? We've changed that to town-city institutional as well, correct?
Yes, yeah. A lot of that area in the old ordinance was zoned industrial. It's not really an industrial area anymore, especially since the icebox and riverfront, and it's really turned into more of a commercial area than an industrial area.
In what way do you feel like this zoning plan is looking towards the future? What will allow the city to do more of that we haven't been able to do, as you mentioned? People needing to come more before the zoning board for variances that they might not need to because of the plan being so old as it is? So, like, what, where does this leave us open in the future to, if there was an area that is more commercial, like increasing building? What do you feel like, in your opinion?
Yeah, well, the ordinance is always open to be amended. It's almost the same process we're going through now, public hearings and review by the county and city planning commissions, but we could always go back and amend the ordinance.
Mr. King, is it fair to say that by updating this ordinance after 30 years, it might help reduce the number of requests in front of the zoning board for amendments?
Yes.
Or exceptions, I guess I should say.
Yeah, hopefully, it's going to reduce them by a lot. And we shouldn't have to be granting a lot of variances. The ordinance should be, this is the, these are the requirements, and most people should be, should live by them.
Thank you.
Dr. Rocha, I also added that, updating our SAPA plan...
Dr. Rocha, I also added that updating our SAPA plan and city adopting the ordinance would also help us, us, the city, work with surrounding municipalities and other initiatives, such as the Stormwater Authority and other initiatives that would require us to work with other governmental entities. So, this shows, shows the opportunity. I think the last time we had was maybe the Sewer Authority where Scranton and Dunmore had worked together. But there are very few, there are very few opportunities, and this is an opportunity for us to work with surrounding communities to advance, advance some of these causes.
And then what would the next step be after this? You said Dunmore was the remaining town that, that needed to still pass this? So, I don't know if they're waiting on us, what, what their, their plans are, if they're going to then bring this up and pass it, and then it just begins to get enacted, correct?
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, we adopt it, and then Dunmore adopts it, and it takes effect in all nine communities. And when that's, when that's been completed, we're going to be moving back into a planning phase again, and we'll be starting to work on a new comprehensive plan for all the municipalities because, that was adopted in 2009, so that's already 10, more than 10 years old. So, we'll be right back, starting that process again, relooking at everything.
Right, and so this, we would also want to bring back 10 years from now?
Yes.
To make changes at that point? And then, so SAPA will regularly meet to, to continue that work?
Yes.
And who do we have? Is it just you and the, the planning office that represents the city then in that capacity?
Yeah, myself, and usually one of, one or more of the members of the planning commission would sit at the SAPA meetings. It's a, because the city, we're the only, I think we're the only municipality that has a planning staff. So, most of the other municipalities, it's either planning commission members, or supervisors, or councilmen for the other municipalities.
Okay, and once, once that comprehensive plan is developed, will that also come through? Council?
Absolutely. Council would, would adopt the plan as the official comprehensive plan of the city of Scranton.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions for Mr. King?
I just have one more. There was, there was four amendments that I made the other day. Two of them were definitions in the solar piece. One was section 516 on solar energy systems, and the other one was 517. I think they've been passed along to your office. I think we're in agreement.
Frank put them up to us, and we do actually have definitions in there, what we said, we could add, we had a couple of words in there to make sure that they, they jive up with the, with the section 516 and 17. But the definitions are in there. There's a definition for onsite solar and offsite solar.
Yeah, these were just a little bit more clarification. I'd like to get in there. So, that one seemed to be all right. I'm sure the other one?
Yeah, I, I don't see any issues clarifying those definitions.
Andrew Cotillo is not able to be here this evening, but he'll work with, work with Mr. Gallagher, and we'll, we'll get that, get back to you the, the language that we're comfortable with, and then you all can take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. King. And I believe that the mayor is here also to talk about the Environmental Advisory Council?
Yes, so, a quick presentation on this, too.
Mayor, if you could move the mic a little bit closer, I'd appreciate that, so that the audience can hear. Thank you.
All right, so, Environmental Advisory Council is something that we're looking to stand up, as you all know, from the legislation. You know, I'm not going to give you guys a lecture on climate change. It doesn't seem like the, the best use of time. But we certainly know that it's a threat, and it's something that as a city and as a region, we really need to take seriously. Larry mentioned stormwater and that effort. Oh, it didn't change? Oh, sorry. There we go, see? So, we want to make sure that, that we're keeping up, keeping up with the times and doing what we can to make sure that we're aligning our policies, our ordinances, our projects with, with the idea in mind that we need to make sure that we're ecologically sound as possible, that we're, you know, conserving things, that we're getting our residents the access to clean air, clean water that they deserve. If you look, Pennsylvania is pretty abominable in terms of its rankings. We're number one in the worst cities for allergies and asthma. We're number one in the most, Pennsylvania is the, the most polluted state in terms of water sources. So, it's, you know, this is serious business, and the advisory council is a resource that we want to stand up in the city to help advise us to make sure that we're doing what we can, again, on projects, on legislation, on programs, on ordinances. So, with that, to promote sustainability and climate action, we propose this Environmental Advisory Council. It still didn't go? Okay, sorry. There we go, okay. So that we can have this resource. So, this, the pieces of this are taken from, from the state. We didn't, we didn't just come up with this one day. This is something, these, these pieces exist, these councils exist in other, other cities. So, we've adopted that from those other governmental bodies. So, they, it can be, it's an advisory group. They are not, it's not like a planning commission or a zoning board where they're making any sort of, they're not making decisions for us. They're not, people aren't coming to them to adjudicate a zoning issue or anything like that. This is advisory in nature, so it's something where we can gain, we can all gain the, the knowledge and the resources from these folks. But again, it's not, this is not a full commission where, where we have, you know, we'd have some sort of planning process that we'd be shepherding along on a legal basis through them.
So, they would make suggestions, maybe some initiatives that would come through?
Right, but not, but they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be mandating us to do something, or they wouldn't be, from a legal perspective, they wouldn't be the body that somebody would go to, to, you know, mitigate some stormwater issue. It's an advisory council, advisory being the, the key term there. So, you know, it's, it'd be volunteer, just like all of our other boards and councils and authorities. And we'd be looking for people that are, you know, in these, in these sectors, in these industries, to help us understand what we should be doing better. Why does it keep doing that? I'm sorry. Why is it doing that? Do I have it on the wrong?
Would this board have-
I told you guys this would happen.
Would the board have its own solicitor?
That's a good question. We would have, I'm sure we would at least have a dedicated solicitor from here with it. Because they don't, because they're not acting, because they're not acting in any sort of legal capacity, I'm not sure they would have an official solicitor.
They don't have the authority, so I don't, I don't think they would, they would not have any authority, so I don't think they-
Right, right. I think, you know, I, my, I could be wrong. My, my understanding of it is more like somebody like Andrew Cotillo from our law office would kind of be the one that helps shepherd it, but it wouldn't need, wouldn't need a solicitor in the way that zoning needs a solicitor or an authority.
I was looking to see what kind of cost would be incurred by the creation of a board.
So, they, they may discuss environmental issues of concern within the city, and maybe make a recommendation to the mayor or the city council to say, listen, this is something maybe not everybody's aware of. It might be something we want to consider in terms of possible ordinance to address it, what have you, but-
Right, so things that, you know, topics they would discuss, or, you know, all the things that you see on the screen there. But again, the topics to advise on, not, not things that they are adjudicating. They're not a, they wouldn't be a legal entity in that way. But things that, things that are difficult for us to always be 100% on top of, right? We've got, we have incredible folks at the city. We've got our, we've got the planning department. We've got, you know, our, our public health coordinator, but we don't have actually any one specific climate coordinator, for example. Things like some of these invasive species pieces. If we have an advisory council that's dedicated volunteers to raise some of these issues with us to make sure that we're on top of it, I think that would be very helpful to us.
So, say we had an invasive species. We had the lantern fly in the last two years. The game commission was on supposedly the one that's, the point of contact or the one that's running that, but I really don't see too much being done about it. What can a group like this do for an invasive species such as that?
I mean, I think they can, so when things like that happen, we, between our public health coordinator, and it's usually Don's office and my office that kind of coordinate with the, and sometimes DPW, we certainly coordinate and try to mitigate it and get the information out, but this would be an additive group that can help talk to elected officials, help advocate on behalf of the city or the neighborhoods, to, say, the state to do more, to the federal government to do more. You know, it says, like, you know, rallying around a project in the case of invasive species, you know, if there are things that we could be doing better, that we don't have the bandwidth to fully research, if this group can bring that to us, that would be terrific. But we're, you know, we don't have, you know, some, some very large cities have, like, a full climate office for those types of things. We, you know, don't have this, so I think this would be the type of entity that could help with that. And then on the, there's what they provide, and then a couple of things they don't provide. So, again, they don't make regulatory decisions. They don't take supplant planning, zoning, or parks and recreation. So, there, it would be a, an entity that we're looking to, to maintain positive and productive working relationships with us and other municipalities. I think this group and us leading the way in this region would be helpful as we embark on a regional stormwater. Did it not go? Of course not. As we embark on some of these other regional projects, I think, starting with this body, maybe it's something that, that would be helpful to our, our neighboring municipalities as well. So, when it comes to water, when it comes to invasive species, obviously, those don't know boundaries, so that would be helpful. And, you know, I know you had spoken last week about the structure. If you, if, you know, if it's council's decision to increase the, increase the number of the seated members from three to five, I certainly don't see a problem with that. And then we, we have the provision in there to have associate members that are, you know, we can have kind of as many of those as we like, so that we can bring in, you know, people from the colleges that are studying these things, and have a lot of folks that are giving us advice. We don't want to limit the advice that we're able to get through this council.
With that training through DCNR, and we conserve PA, is that something that would be a cost?
Says free on there, so my understanding is that it's a training that we would get from the state.
So, this is something that recently PA enacted a law that municipalities can create these bodies, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. How many, do we know how many municipalities in the state have these bodies?
I don't know that figure. But I, you know, to me, that, to me, I don't see much, not really see any downside risk to it. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't have a startup cost. It doesn't have, again, I don't think there should be a legal cost. I think it's something our law department would handle. If there, if there was, if there was a cost, then we would, you know, take that to you all through the budget process in the fall. I don't, I don't foresee that being necessary.
The one thing that was a concern that council had expressed, we'd like to see this be a five-member board.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's with, it's with council now, so would you like to make the amendment, or would you like us to resubmit the?
So, I, I think the process is if, if a new body is being created, it's, it has to be created through us, correct?
Correct, that's, I'm just saying, let me know if you need us to resubmit the legislation to you, or if you'll make the amendment.
We can look at introducing it, and someone could add an amendment that could become a five-member board rather than a three with two alternates.
Sure.
I did want to clarify one thing. So, say, more of a controversial topic comes up, like fracking or something, they're not going to take a stance or opinion on behalf of the city on such a topic. They would bring forward just, you know, evidence or education for, for your office or council to let us know of, you know?
That would-
If there's an issue of concern, and if there's something we want to do to address it.
Yeah, that, that is how, that is the, the nature of what we're trying to construct. I mean, any, you know, anything can happen, but, but the idea is, is information and advice, not, not sort of taking some hard, hard-line stance, especially if it was in conflict with, with the administration, that would, would be, would be interesting, I suppose, but certainly not-
Yeah, that was my takeaway, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Certainly not the planned, the planned effort. Okay.
If there's no more questions, I know that Eileen Cipriani is here, and you wanted to talk a little bit about parks this evening as well?
Yes. Eileen, do you want to switch with Don and hit the slides?
For the opportunity to update you on where we, pardon? On where we are with a number of the parks projects in the city. As you know, we, about two years ago, completed a parks assessment. So, we have used that assessment as a guide to systematically go through and look at the parks that have been prioritized in that for parks improvements, new equipment, ADA compliance. And through grant writing and the American Rescue Plan, we have pulled together over $11 million worth of funding. The grants have come from DCNR, DCD, we have our CDBG Pocket, we have LSA, and we have our caps all included in that. So, it's been quite a collection of, of funding. We currently have nine projects underway in nine different parks. So, the, this is a city map of, these are the current projects that we're working on right now in the city. So, they're, a variety of areas all over, all over town. We've tried to be very equitable in addition to following the parks assessment as to, as to where we're, we're moving forward. The three parks that are closest to being completed now are Connors, Novembreno, and the North Scranton Mini Park. So, we have a, we're far enough along that we have artist rendering of, of Connors, of the three parks. This is Connors Park, where we'll put in a swing set bank and a play structure, and we'll be able to put in what's called poured-in-play. It's a surface that has a long longevity, as opposed to every year having to put in the engineered wood fiber. This is something that we won't have to replace, and the maintenance is significantly reduced. These three parks, and look at, this is Novembreno, which consists of numerous play structures and a swing bank that will be in there. This is also poured-in-place is in there as well. And the last one is the-
So, Ms. Cipriani, this playground here is going to be located on the other side of the bathhouse, correct?
Yeah, so the bathhouse is to the right.
Yeah, so the, yeah, it's, this is going to be in the open field where the old pool was.
Absolutely. So, and the last one-
Is this part of the property that you acquired?
Not yet. The property that we require, acquired, will acquire is to the left of that, where the parking lot will be. So, and the last one is the mini park. But of these three parks, they have gone through the CoStars process, so we were able to order the equipment. They are now out for bid for general contracting work, so those bids will be back in the beginning of April, the first week of April. In Novembreno, we were, we're fortunate enough to get a donation from the Monsignor Anthony Mara Fund of upwards of $60,000. And they have participated in the project themselves. They've helped do the design in the, in the projects. All of the equipment is slated to be in at the end of May, beginning of June, which then we should do construction right after that. Hopefully, the construction of these three will be done in the beginning of July. And if you see the one that's up on the screen now, it's the North Scranton Mini Park, so fire station right near there. So, this is fire-themed play equipment. And to the, the upper right-hand corner is an adult fitness track that the fire department or anybody can use. I was at a, a meeting yesterday where there was a number of vendors, and it's amazing the outdoor equipment that they have, and they have it set up that it's, it's weatherized. It, this is going to be a really big asset, and I think people really enjoy being able to use that circuit for free outside.
And this one is located behind the fire station in North Scranton on West Market Street, where the old, there used to be like checkers table, like the stone checker tables, things like that.
Right, and this, this is what- Right, and this, this is what will be there. So and this is also, we're putting port in place here as well. So the, the next three parks that we're working on right now is Oakmont, Capous, well, actually four parks, Oakmont, Capous, Connell, and Naog. So Oakmont, Capous, and Connell, we are working with the engineer. They've done a preliminary design, so the designer will be able to head to the CoStarz vendors for costing and equipment design. We've met with the neighborhood associations. We've met with UNC, because Capous Playground is a vital part of their M Street revitalization. So they're really excited to have that incorporated into all the work that they're doing there. We've also, surveying is also done in these three parks. In the Naog Butterfly Park, that, the engineer on that is Barry Isid, so we've been working a partnership with the Recreation Authority, and the Recreation Authority will be contributing a significant match, $120,000, to this project. So we, we've had initial meetings with them, and Barry Isid will be starting the engineering on that, or the surveying on that first. That'll, that'll take a while to survey that, and then they'll come up with a preliminary design. Talking to Bob Gattan, so we're putting together some meetings up at Naog, so that people can come and give input on, on their thoughts on what we'd like to see in that park there. Next parks are Robinson and Weston Park. Now, these parks have a larger earth disturbance, and because of that, we need to have an MPDES permit, so that will take a little bit longer. That's got to go through DEP to be done. We've met with the Robinson Neighborhood Association already, and we have another meeting teed up with them to, to have a conversation again, so that we can get more people and more, more stakeholder engagement. The other thing that we're doing with Robinson is we're having collaborative meetings with HRG, who are the engineers for the East Mountain Stormwater Assessment. So McLean and HRG have been working together to make sure that they coordinate on any of the stormwater, stormwater projects that HRG might want to put forward, and how we could coordinate with the park to make sure that there's less runoff coming off the park, and maybe there's stormwater adaptations that could go right into the park. So I, I think that'll be a really, a really good project to be able to coordinate both entities.
So Ms. Cipriani, going back to the start, we had Novembreno, we had the North Scranton Park, what was the third one in the beginning?
Connors.
And Connors Park. Now that-
They're the three that are closest to being done.
Okay. Now, those ones, when I look at the answer in the ARP spending, ARPA spending plan, are what, what funding is coming out of that for Novembreno?
They are all ARPA with the money from the Monsignor Mara Fund in addition.
All three of those will get money from that other fund?
No, just Novembreno will get money from that.
Do you, do you know what each of those parks are going to, what allocation from ARPA is going to each of those parks?
We will shortly, as soon as we get the, the GC numbers back, we'll be able to, to know that.
Okay. When I'm looking at the spending plan, I see there's $750,000 in the park study improvements. Is that where-
That's that one.
That's what this is included in?
Mm-hmm.
And then Capous, the Capous Park has $500,000, that's just for Capous, correct?
That's just for Capous.
And then the splash pad piece, is that just for Capous as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Eileen, a quick question. So since we're speaking, you know, about ARPA funds, to your knowledge, has any criteria changed with regards to the usage of it versus the census tract? We were told we couldn't use the money for at Naog, for the pool because of the census tract. But I'm hearing, and, and maybe you can verify me, that, you know, has there been a, the final, final rule with regards to how the money, has there any changes been made that you're aware of, where the criteria has changed, where money could be used differently than we were told before?
So what we've heard from the US Treasury back in February, I think, well, actually it was probably earlier than that, that they said that they are going to make some changes, but most of the changes had to do with funding used for transportation projects, and to be able to use the funding for projects that are fundable by CDBG dollars. So the, we're awaiting that guidance, so they, they haven't issued the rules on it yet. They were supposed to be issued at the end of February, but we haven't seen that.
But nothing related to like, say, health and welfare versus census tract, or like, the county, the counties have found some ARPA money to build a pool up at McDay.
Mm-hmm.
They were able to do it. So my question is, was that because of the change in criteria they're allowed to do that? Are we allowed to maybe do that at Naog with regards to the pool?
My understanding, and I don't know the ins and outs of what they did with their funding, but my understanding was they use revenue loss funding for that.
Well, we have that. We, we didn't use it this year.
Pardon?
We have revenue loss money that we didn't use this year.
Mm-hmm.
The revenue, we still have the revenue loss in the 2023 budget, so that's, that is still there. So if, if, I do think that we'll, there'll be some change with the, the treasury rules. It will not help us with parks projects. I, I don't see that happening. But it might help us to have more flexibility with some of the transportation dollars, in which case we can, we, we will review anyway. We'll redo a review of the ARPA spending plan and present something to you all with some changes. That can include changes to the revenue loss plan, and, you know, we can make some decisions together about what, what the priorities are and what we'd want to do with those funds.
Mayor, is it fair to say, I know we've had discussions about Naog and Naog Pool, and I believe that this entire council is in support of a swimming pool, not necessarily a zero-entry pool that's three feet deep. Is it, is it fair to say that your administration is going to work toward trying to achieve, put a funding package together that would help support an actual swimming pool like eight feet deep, that maybe can be brought back to the council that, you know, and, and I'm not talking about a Taj Mahal. We're talking about a swimming pool so that adults and children can actually go up and swim, you know, that's, goes beyond three feet, maybe still has a splash pad, that's fine, but really, you know, a big concern is actual swimming for the residents at Naog Pool. Is it fair to say that your administration is working toward trying to find the funding or put a funding package together to try to address that?
Yes, so last week, we learned that we were successful in getting a million-dollar LSA grant for design of a, a water feature at Naog. As soon as we're able to execute that agreement, we'll put out, we'll, and we'll work with you all to put together the scope of an engineering RFP to see what we can, see what we can do in that way. But I think we need to set expectations that it, we don't have the money for a Taj Mahal pool complex, but if we're, if we're talking about a, a pool that we can, that is more modest in its, in its nature, then I think that we can work on something. I don't know where all the money is going to come from, but we certainly are, we will work toward that. Getting the LSA last week was a, a big boost to that effort.
Eileen, is it fair to say that funding sources come up quite a bit? Obviously, we've seen quite a number of grants that you've applied for and ultimately have received. So is it fair to say that there's some possibilities out there too for additional funding to be able to come in and support something like this?
Sure, there, there's always possibilities, and we're very aggressive in applying for grants. A, a, as you know, from, from your work, it, sometimes they don't match together, and it's difficult, and if it's a federal source with another federal source, we, we always can't match it together, or state and state. So we have to try and, you know, figure out which grants we could get, could match each other, and then, you know, factor into that, we often might need a city match to go along with it if we can't use another grant match. So we, we always are aggressive looking for grants, and we'll continue to do so.
So at this point in time, what, we have a $2 million grant with a $2 million match, and now the new $1 million that you just spoke of?
Right, so that grant would, did not come to, could, could not come to fruition because we did not have engineering. We would have to step back and reapply for that.
Okay. So in regard to the question that I think Councilman McCandrew asked, we initially put this plan together with census tracts. Has there been additional findings to say that we could use this money citywide as opposed to census tracts?
We, we just had a conversation with our consultant earlier today to again discuss that, and they'll be here on the 11th, I believe, we're coming back. And they have indicated, there's a variety of other federal programs that you could use, like CHIP and other things like that, and I, I believe you had mentioned unemployment. Those, those things can be used, but we, we have to remember, especially with unemployment, if we use that as the metric, what our project needs to do is solve for unemployment, right? So it has to be related to what we're, we're using it for. And that's what we discussed with them today, but they'll be here on the 11th, and, you know, you'd be able to, to ask it. And maybe by then, the federal government will have completed this set of rule revisions, hopefully by then.
But it's important-
Also, with that being said, looking at the, the plan that we've had that's been put together for some time now, is there anything that you've identified that may be non-relevant now, that we could reallocate that money?
Well, we have talked about that a number of times, that once those rules come out, I, I think it would be appropriate that we would come back, and i- if those rules change things, you know, in a significant way, that, come back to you and with some ideas on how we, what money is flexible, and then we could, and everyone could decide together on how to use it.
But again, it, it is highly unlikely that the, the qualified census tract map is changing in any way aside from transportation-related projects. That the, the ARPA flex idea is based on transportation. It's not, I, I do not anticipate that it's going to change our ability to, to, with these parks projects, for example, lump more of them together. So just to set those expectations, it'll give us potentially the ability to shift a couple of our line items to other line items, freeing up potentially some money, but there always, there's always going to be, we're going to have to pull the money from somewhere. But we'll be able to, to present a, a spending, a different, an updated spending plan to you all, and we'll look forward to doing that. We can talk about it. I don't, I don't know that the rules will shift before the 11th, but answer will be here on the 11th to talk that through.
Eileen, is there any annual window for RACP grants, like for application? Like, I would think RACP would be the route to go, because you can get typically larger amounts through RACP.
The, the window isn't always consistent. I, I think we usually see it open in August. Last year, they opened twice, but we will, you know, we will wait for it to open. We have itemizations in that would, would cover it. That's the, the key to having the itemization in, is to be able to apply.
Great. Thank you.
So just to continue on, we've done very, very early discussions with Riley Associates and, and Tom McLean about a skate park at West, that's, should be Weston Field. We've identified a grant possibility for the master plan. It's the Recreation and Conservation Planning Grant, so that we're working on drafting that application now, so that would be a master plan for Naog Park itself. And if you recall, last November, we received an RCAP for a court complex that would be located at Naog Park. So the engineers have been looking at different sites that might be a possibility for that there. That would include pickleball courts there.
With that being said, you know, I, I have it highlighted here, the skate park. So we have a skate park, it's, it's $1 million. When we're looking at something like that, is that something we feel maybe that money can be used towards a pool where more people in the city would get a use out of a pool at Naog than they would a skate park at Weston Field?
Well, depending on how the rules change, right? So if we could only use revenue loss money to be flexible to do this, so we could only ever have $10 million in revenue loss, that's the most we could have. So if we didn't have the, the skate park, that is in negative economic impact, right? So that, that wouldn't be a sensible thing, because we would have to take something out of revenue loss to be able to replace that money in. There's, um-
So how is the skate park like, I, I don't, you might have to explain that a little bit more.
The skate parks, so the skate parks in a, in the QCT.
Oh, it's considered in the neighborhood.
It's in a qualified census tract, so that's why we're able to do that.
But if we are allowed to use that citywide rather than in that qualified census tract, it's a possibility that that money could be reallocated to, say, Naog?
Right, so there's other spots on here. There's an allocation for sidewalks that probably would be more of a viable move if, if we can shift dollars. And then to finish, schoolyard transformation. So this project is a partnership with Valley in Motion and a nonprofit called the Trust for Public Land, and they are looking at rehabilitating schoolyards through, throughout the city. So taking a, a schoolyard that's a, just a macadam, just a plain macadam section, and designing it to be more functional for the students. So they started it at Kennedy School, and we actually were down there. The third graders are working with the consultant to design it. It, it's really a fascinating process, and I think this will turn out to be one of the, the best projects that we have of, of all of the ARPA dollars, given the, the great input of the, of the students. There's other schools that they're trying to identify, and Scrantonary Foundation now is willing to partner with them to actually take this and fundraise and make this a sustainable project going forward. So we, you know, we were able to just provide the money to get them started. The peer grant, that's something that's just getting underway. That's for parks management, so this is with DCNR. So they will assign a third-party evaluator to look at, look at all of our parks, the management, the operation of the parks, and give us some, some best practices and some, you know, some, maybe some recommendations going forward on, on what we could do better with those. Bear tree, bare root trees, this is the first time in a while I think we've applied for that. It's to get trees, free trees. I believe there's 20 of them. They will go in various parks throughout the city. And lastly, pool facilities. We've asked our engineer, Tom Riley, to go out and evaluate Connell, Weston Park, and Weston Field pools for their condition. So we only have the preliminary report back at this time, but Tom feels that all three pools will be operational with some work. We need to do some work on the filter at Weston Field. We need, we have some work that needs to be done on the sidewalks. There's some sidewalk issues where they're real tripping hazards, so that'll have to be done. Some general plaster and painting that I believe is annual maintenance. So what he said to us, there are a number of other issues that he believes could be more significant, but he thinks the park, the pools will be operational for this year, and then we could put out an RFP for those, that the rest of the work, once it's, once it's identified, and then do it post-swim season.
Is that pool going to remain at the current depth? Will that pool remain at the current depth?
At Connell?
Is this, this is Connell, or this is Weston Park?
Yeah, so no depths will change in the-
Okay.
The pools with this process.
All right.
Does anyone have any further questions? If not, I want to thank Eileen for being here. Don King, thank you so much. Mayor Cognetti and BA Larry West, we appreciate you coming in to keep us up to date on what's happening in the city.
Thanks, Eileen.
We look forward to hearing from you again in the future. I'll take a, I'll take a two-minute break before we start the meeting.